I show the time to be 6:00 PM. This is Central Daylight Time. Regular City Council Meeting, Monday, July 29th, 2012, Jasper City Hall, 465 South Main Street. Let the record show that all of City Council members are present for tonight's meeting. With that said and done, Sister C., could you give us a word, Freda, please?
Again, Father, we come tonight. We just want to tell you thank you for what you've already done and for what you're going to do. Tonight, we ask that you lead in God, even in the meeting tonight. And, oh, God, Lord, just remember us and lead us into all truths. And, Lord, we thank you today, and we give you the praise in Jesus' name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Okay. First of all, we'd like to welcome everyone to the people's house. We want you to feel comfortable here tonight, and we appreciate you for coming out. We would ask that you take your cell phones and put them to silent or buzz or something and other there where you don't interfere with tonight's meeting. We have first over this tonight, it says, "Mayor to present a proclamation to DuPont Goodrich Federal Credit Union." Do we have the representatives of that organization here? Would you all please come up? And you are?
I am Jacob Cassidy. I'm from the marketing department.
I'm Jennifer Forward.
We're glad to have both of you here tonight. Where is DuPont Goodrich Federal Credit Union, chartered in 1962 as a nonprofit corporate to provide free or low-cost financial products and services, remains true to its philosophy of people helping people? And where is DuPont Goodrich Federal Credit Union, serves over 30,000 members, dedicated to providing top-quality service and helping individuals meet their financial goals? And where is DuPont Goodrich Federal Credit Union, accepting social responsibility by teaching financial literacy, supporting charitable organizations, and participating in community events? And where is DuPont Goodrich Federal Credit Union, is celebrating its 50 years of service to southeast Texas? Where is I, the mayor, and council, we wish to recognize and thank DuPont Goodrich Federal Credit Union, both past and present employees who have been faithful in these efforts to make a difference in our community for 50 years. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Michael Out, Mayor of the City of Jasper, do hereby proclaim Friday, July 27th, which I believe is your anniversary day, as July, as the DuPont Goodrich Federal Credit Union Day. Thank you all for your service to the community. Appreciate both of you for being here tonight. Okay. Next, we have the departmental reports that have been supplied to various members of the city council last week. If you would look through those committee reports, or those various department reports, and if you have any questions or concerns, now's the time. We would bring attention to you in this department report. It's not in there. But the first item of the report is the Animal Services Department. It is my understanding that the state came and inspected the animal shelter last week, and they may have found just a few little minor things, but overall, is it my understanding, Tommy, is that we're pleased with the operation of the Jasper Animal Shelter?
Yes.
I encourage you new City Council members that when you get these departmental reports each week for each month, that you look through them very close and see what, very much tells you just what exactly what took place in this month. There is a lot of information there, but if you don't understand something about it, always ask. City staff will answer. If they don't have the information you need, they'll get it to you. Okay. See no questions or anything? We have two people that are up for public comment tonight. And Mr. Townsend is the first one to sign in, Executive Director of the Texas Municipal League. Mr. Townsend, were you here to talk to us in the public section, or would you like to talk to us when we discuss the insurance?
When we discuss the insurance.
Okay, sir. I'm gonna hold you back for then.
Fine. Thank you.
That item is on the agenda. We have then up next Glory Von Zingo, 260 Kim Drive, JECO number eight, concerning item number eight, JECO replacement. Three minutes, please.
City Council and Mayor, I'm Glory Von Zingo. I'm here to talk about item number eight on the agenda, which is my replacement on the JECO board. I'm here to support Kai Griffin. I submitted his name for my replacement, but when I saw the agenda for today, Kai Griffin was not included, only Randy Sayers. Before the June meeting, I asked Carrie Ellis if I could submit a candidate for my upcoming vacancy. Carrie said yes. I contacted Kai for permission to submit his name and he agreed. At the June meeting, I brought forth Kai's name and told the board of our conversation. Someone else brought Randy's name to be considered. Carrie, I discussed this with you, and I'd like to know why was Kai's name removed from the agenda when it was put on? And it was never voted on at a JECO meeting. If anyone hasn't been keeping up with current events in the past year, this is a similar situation of backroom, good old white politics that citizens of Jasper will not tolerate. Ladies and gentlemen, two names were submitted to the JECO board for your approval. Only one name appears on the agenda. Was this another decision made outside the city council meeting? Just so I'd like to know. Until this issue is resolved, I would like to suggest this agenda item be taken. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Up next, we have Considered Approval for Three Sets of Minutes, Regular City Council Meeting in June, the 11th, 2012. Emergency Call City Council Meeting for June, the 12th, 2012. And Special Call City Council Meeting for June, the 22nd, 2012. Item number one on the agenda.
Some move.
Motion made by Mr. Sayers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hopson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show that the measure passed unanimously. Item number two is Consider Request of Mr. Charles Gee regarding the National Wild and Ecenic Rivers System. Mr. Gee came to me, and I think he also came to the City Secretary of my right, Mrs. Bumfret, and asked that that not be discussed tonight, that it be, that we'll move that to, be struck from the agenda. That's basically what he said, and he would be requesting that it be placed on there at a later date. So, permission of the council, we will just strike that from the agenda. If the question personally put it on there, and if he wants it back on the agenda, he can come back before the council. I have no ideas why. He said something that he wasn't prepared or something. We have up next, item number three, Consider Pastor Gary Marshall from the Harvest Church to speak regarding drainage. It's my understanding that that may have been rectified. Mr. City Manager, can you tell us?
We spoke with him, and he had the issue, and it's gonna be clarified through this grant, which is the next item.
Okay. That was my understanding of that, and I wanted to get that from you. So, with that, we will strike that from the agenda as well. And moved to number four, which is Update from David Waxman's office on Ike Disaster Recovery Grant Round 2.2. Mr. Waxman's office had requested that they be on the agenda tonight, but then they called back. Well, let me let the City Manager tell you. He talked with them directly.
They had a workshop in Austin they had to attend after we had put them on there, but I gave you all the information on the Ike Round 2.2 that we have finally obtained. We have not signed a contract on what we were told one day last week, that we received 1.445.684, 1,445.684, for street improvement and drainage debris removal from the identified drainages that are listed in the packet that I put at your tables. So, that's a good thing. We've been chasing this thing since January 2010, and we applied, and then we rescinded it, and we reapplied, and we had to go through all of our fast-form training and everything, and it's finally come hopefully to fruition. The mayor will be signing it, they said probably by the 15th of this month.
And this mayor will say that I'll sign it, I'll believe it when I see it. We applied for this money, and basically we were told by the, well, we waited, 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 and they changed agencies that were administering it, and it just, it's been one thing after another. And Tommy and I made a trip over to, where was it we went?
Roveton.
Roveton, and the other cities and counties that were there were just as adamant about, where's the money? You've heard that lady used to say about the hamburgers, where's the beef? And they were all, in fact, some of those people over there were pretty hot, because they said, you know, we've been promised this, promised that. What was that, over, what, a year and a half ago, a year ago?
It was about a year and a half.
And so then the, our consultant Waxman came to us and told us, said, "The best way for you all to get this money is to withdraw your application and turn around and file it in a different way." In fact, they advised all the cities to do that. And so, we did, as our consultant told us, and so sure enough, now, they've called us, what? They've been in touch with us three or four times to tell us that we've got the money and it's on the way, so.
I met with Mr. Venice last Thursday, and he said that this was the hour. I mean, we don't have it in the bank yet, but I believe that.
Anyway, we're trying to get it, and we plan, as you see, we told them all along that we wanted to use the great majority of it to, in fact, almost all of it, 95% of it really, to, for the streets. Doing some streets, we've got some very poor streets around town, and also flood and drainage clean up around town so the water moves better, and that's what we signed it up under, and hopefully we'll be getting that pretty soon. Any questions or any concerns with the council?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Tommy about the drainage. Did you talk to Gary Marshall? You said you spoke to him.
My lawyer did.
My?
Yes. He called me and said, stripped me from the agenda, that he wasn't, he had talked to previous management twice and didn't get anywhere, but he kinda got the horse that had the car for him to talk to y'all or whatever, and we assured him that we were gonna take it all the way on down to Bulldog Avenue and everything, so.
It looks like from the satellite picture that that drainage actually wraps around and goes back north behind the, what is now Harvest Church. And I thought it crossed Bulldog Avenue also, but I don't think it does. Does anybody know?
It does.
It does?
It actually starts, that drainage actually starts on 190, across from the truck stop and what's in the grants to clean that.
Yeah, I know, it's that creek that runs right behind the 11th Federal Field. It drains quite a bit of Jasper.
And it actually crosses there at Harvest Church, goes down, goes under Bulldog, down there, when you get south of Bulldog, there's another drain from the west that actually ties into, close to it down there by Water Run. So, all that's on this Ike recovery.
What are the, do we know what the proposed repairs involve?
It's basically what we did, like on Sandy Creek and on several other drainage in town. We go in, we get a temporary easement to do 30-foot either side of the center of the creek or the drainage, and we go in, clean all the underbrush, any trees that's fallen in there, or any trees that's gonna fall in there, and remove that, and it opens up the drainage.
Well, I know, he told me it was, his problem was erosion, and I don't know, you know, I was thinking maybe we could drop a dozer down in there when it's dry and just shove it out.
Well, we're gonna have a track hole in there. That's how we did all Sandy Creek through town.
And we've got some wrap up at the yard with all the busted concrete and stuff, and it's perfect for wrap, so.
And the funding for that is in this Section 5, any flood and drainage?
Yes. And like on Sandy Creek, we bought grass seed and reseeded a lot of it, all the drains we did.
Okay. Now, being no action to come from that, we go to item number five, Consider Cancellation Notice of TML Intergovernmental Risk, Pool Cities Errors and Omissions Liability Coverage effective September 1st of 2012. The cities, Mr. Towns, we have Marvin Townsend, who is Executive Director of the Texas Municipal League. Mr. Townsend, welcome to Jasper. Glad to have you here tonight.
Thank you, sir. Drive it back over here.
Yes, sir.
Let me just hand out, if you don't mind, this is a report that I would be presenting to the Board of Trustees of your pool. Get my stuff to work. If it's all right, I'd like first just to, pardon me, be sure that everybody is aware of the nature of the TML Intergovernmental Risk Pool. You are one of 2,740 local governments that are members together by a contract. The TML Intergovernmental Risk Pool is not an insurance company. Every two years, you owe for the individual who is gonna represent you on the Board of Trustees, and the goal of a self-insurance pool is that everybody together can be stronger than they are separately, and that has proven to be very true. The pool started in 1973, when the state legislature saw fit to require workers' compensation be mandatory. In 1983, when the liability and property programs fell apart across the state, and the private sector was not meeting the needs of Texas cities, the liability and property program of which you participate was created. The concept obviously is that each party needs, over the long haul, to bear their part of the costs, and that by operating together, reinsurance is cheaper, the administration is more efficient and more effective, and everybody comes out ahead. The reason for this discussion before our Board of Trustees is the most recent public officials results of the city in the pool. But I thought it might be helpful, at the bottom of the first page, there's a statement, I'm sorry, it continues on the second page, but of the various kinds of insurance that you participate in, you purchase general liability, law enforcement, public officials, sewage backup, auto liability, auto physical damage, and real property. If you look at the top of the second page, you'll note that the word contribution appears. Because we're a public pool, we don't use the word premiums, that's an insurance term, but it's the same effect, because that's how much you pay. And you'll note that over the nine years that you've been in the program, you have paid in $1,059,969, and the losses as of March 31st were $1,740,000. Obviously, that means all the rest of the members have participated substantially in the past in your losses. The gross figures are a little bit misleading, however, because you've had good periods and bad periods. You'll notice about four lines down on that second page, it says, "Less equity returns." Well, you've received back $57,000 of equity returns because of three-year experiences that were good, and there is a return based upon three years of experiences. I just thought you'd wanna see what the whole picture is, as to what other members have participated by helping Jasper and how much Jasper has paid. The next section shows what's happened about public officials. It shows that during the last year, 210, at 211, there were 10 lawsuits filed, and that they had a loss ratio of 1,180%. Obviously, that's not something that can go forward at that kind of ratio. If the pool had that kind of experience, on an average, of course, the pool wouldn't On April 19th, we suggested that it be more appropriate to change the deductible in your public officials coverage. Now, this is just public officials. This is not law enforcement, this is not general liability, this is not auto liability. This is just public officials. Some of you might recognize that more as errors and omissions. It's in the private sector that's often used, that's what I said, errors and omissions. Basically, public officials coverage, it can include some land use matters, it can include some other kinds of concerns, but by and large, it's employment matters. It's unemployment discrimination, it's employment retaliation, it's workers' compensation retaliation. It's that whole basket of mainly federal actions that deal with something that the city must pay because of an adverse decision of some employment matter. Now, pardon me. Obviously, we're concerned that this kind of problem might go forward, and at first we sent you a letter that suggested that we were going to, in fact, did, exercise our option to provide a 60-day notice of cancellation, and that's what this is all about, this report to our board. I am prepared, we have had a great deal of discussion, as you can imagine, about this, and basically, the problem is not the whole workforce, it's not the whole employment process. Nine of these 10 lawsuits that involve the public officials were in the police department. What we are prepared to suggest, rather than outright cancellation, is that the $10,000 deductible be applicable to all the matters of EEO coverage of public officials, except law enforcement, except the police department, and that the deductible there be $50,000. Now, basically, that would mean that you would have the heaviest part of any law enforcement claims. We would still be responsible for the defense of those claims. This only makes sense if it makes sense to you, because we certainly have no problem if you are able to go out and find elsewhere someone who's prepared to provide public officials coverage, but obviously, anybody that's looking at your public officials coverage is going to look at your experience, and it's obviously not been good in the most recent past. So, I know that's jumping over a lot of stuff. The other material that's attached here are the papers that have actually been signed so far, and first, the restriction in the deductible, and then the cancellation of EEO coverage. What we are prepared to rescind the cancellation and change it to a $10,000 deductible for all, except police, and if you wish us to recover the police function, to make that a $50,000 deductible. I know that's a lot to throw at you at one time, and I'm sorry about that, but there's no other way to get it to you except if presented, so.
How is the contribution rate affected by that change?
Well, the, we have already calculated the, well, let me back up. Your year starts October 1st, and I think we, I stand corrected here, I think we've already sent you the cost there, everything, the public officials, and I have an endorsement here, which would provide that public officials for the next year at a cost of... Pardon me, Chris. I like to think about some of your slope, it may be where you have, $25,139, that's your big deductions.
How does that compare with last year for that same cover?
Uh, pardon me, sir. I have that, I don't have it.
Mr. Townsend, it wouldn't have to be exact, I mean, to the dollar, just a ballpark figure if you do it.
I tried it in AAA, but.
What I'm trying to get at is, is that, you know, to us representing a substantial increase in the contribution?
No. No, the increase, of course, is in your deductibles. The, that's pretty close to.
So, would the change of that deductible hold the, pretty much where it is?
As far as the, I don't know.
Contribution cost? No, it would change that profit cost, well, it wouldn't.
No, no, I'm sorry.
I'm talking about the contribution.
Correct.
So, to do, move the deductible to change to keep the contribution level about where it's at?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Are there any other significant changes to the coverage besides the deductible?
No.
No liability limits?
Absolutely.
I mean, as far as no changes?
Not going forward. If you notice, in the second letter, we had already made a change in the.
Right. Like, it was reduced, I understand.
Yeah, but no further reductions, no.
Okay.
Is this informational item for the council, or do we need to take action with the city staff proceeding forward with discussions with the TML and entering agreement with them, or should that come back to us?
Yeah. I, yeah, I think that we could probably do it as part of the city staff. I don't think we'd have to come back to you guys. I think this is an increase, as I recall, of about $10,000, $12,000 in that category.
Do we have a motion?
Some move.
A motion by Mr. McMillan.
To accept.
Do we have a second? Mr. That's kind of a, that's an open motion, Mr. McMillan, just a little part of the procedure here. Could you clarify your motion? Is your motion to the city staff to continue negotiations and to work towards a, signing an document with TML?
That's what you said, Mayor.
That's what I said. That's what you said.
Ditto. I wanna keep the TML insurance, however.
Okay. That's a good motion.
Okay.
Mr. McMillan made a motion to keep the TML insurance. Do we have, we have a second?
I second.
Seconded. Do you accept that motion then, second that? Is there any more discussion?
Yeah. Mr. Townsend, these changes of the insurance were made, from what I'm looking at here, they were made based on decisions of our Chief Person. Am I correct?
Based on the 12-month activity in the year 2011, which were involved 10 public officials lawsuits, nine of which were involved in the police department, and went involved in recall process.
Okay.
It's certainly a fear going forward that there could be other kinds of actions, but that doesn't count the pending nature of, now, I'm not here to speak about the individual lawsuits or even the status of them, but the equal opportunity filing is in addition to the lawsuits that I'm missing. We've been here based upon the year 2011, but recent events didn't help it at all, obviously. I'm not trying to force you. Give me any.
So, you're saying that these are all, you're saying that these are all expenses that were incurred by the TML last year, 2011?
Right, and as of March 31st, now, I feel confident that some of those pending cases will be adversely developed after that date. That's just reality.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, let the record show, it's unanimous, pass. Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
Thank you.
We have up next, Consider Request from the Jasper Economic Development Corporation to Consider Tax Aweing for Terra Biocum, Headed to the City Policy. Carrie, would you come forward? Carrie Ellis, Executive Director of the Jasper Economic Development Corporation.
I'd like to introduce you first, this is Mr. Bob Robertson. He's the CFO of Terra Biocum, and JECO is making a request on behalf of Terra Biocum to, for the tax payment through the city policy, as a matter of the city's policy. The company has constructed a plant in East Jasper on McQueen Street, more than $5 million capital investment, and they're currently employing 14 people at wages of approximately $25 per hour, and they're requesting a tax payment through the city's policy.
Do you want to have some discussion on this before we make a motion, or council? We're here, motion?
Yeah, I'd like to. How much, what are the approximate value of the abatement on an annual basis?
This is our policy right here, form one, it lays down, it's 70, 60, 50, 40, 30, 40, about. thirty, four, about your budget.
Seventy, sixty, fifty, forty.
Do we know what the value of the seventy percent, I mean, seventy percent of what amount, what kind of dollars are we looking at here?
It's going to be based on the valuation of the property, is that correct?
Has it been praised at this point?
Valuation of all improvements to the property.
But we don't have no way knowing what that is, does it?
No.
It hasn't been praised.
Won't that come through the appraisal, because it's...
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not against abatements at all, I think they're a valuable tool, a good incentive, you know, for companies. But I'll just, you know, I'd like to know what we're talking about here, what's being new to this process.
Is there any way we could, before we...
Yeah, we could, we can do, we can get with that price difference, bring you back some figures.
How often do, how often is the city requested to give abatements?
This is the first one I know of since Michael Flack got an abatement for the Savannah Square building up there in, what's, 2005?
2005 or 2006.
There's been abatements, there's been abatements talked about and discussed, but there's never been anybody that got as far enough along to get an abatement since then, am I right?
Well, it was in Savannah Square, I know last night...
Sir Ridley did, on that, I don't know, Walmart, the Sir Ridley Foundation Farm out of Arkansas, when they remodeled that and broke it up into tractors flying off, got an abatement on it. There's only, I only know, in 23 years on, I only know about five abatements total. They're a good thing, but like I say, you need to know upfront that it's going to be this amount of money.
One more thing now, from the appraisal districts.
They usually certify the tax, July 31st is usually when we get our numbers.
Can we do this in the next meeting, would that be satisfactory?
And in the meantime, could we get some sense or some idea of what we're talking about dollar wise?
We should by the next, if they'll certify by July 31st.
When Mr. Luther, the appraisal district, does the evaluation, Terra Biocan will get a copy of that, and then they will know what the valuation is.
I want to help them. I'm not, I'm not talking this down, I just want to know what it is we're giving up.
You just want to know what figure we're having.
Yeah, how much money we're talking about here. You know, and that'll give us some sort of a benchmark going forward, you know, when other people come and ask for abatements, you know, well, you know, compared to Biocan, you know, that was even more less or something, just sort of give us a benchmark, something to look at, and it'd be nice to know how much money we're talking about.
Are you presently operating, or is it still a private plant?
No, it's, this is a commercial plant, and we're operating right now, yes.
Have we already, no, so you're selling product?
We're trying.
Okay, so it's still in the marketing phase?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, what exactly is it you do? Market yourself.
We take, one of the byproducts that's made in the manufacture of biodiesel is glycerin, and they make quite a lot of it. And we have developed the technology to convert that glycerin into propylene glycol, which is used widely as antifreeze or de-icer for airplanes, it's used in polyester resins, and it's used in a lot of oilfield applications. It's a very large, million-dollar size market, product, commodity market. But this is a different way of making it, it's not made from traditional petroleum process, it's like most of that product is made from. So, we think it's a step forward in a green economy.
Who is it about, the driving product?
Uh, no, but it's a non-toxic product. It is non-toxic, yes, as opposed to ethylene glycol that we're mostly familiar with, that's antifreeze.
Who are your customers by and large?
They would be de-icers that most of us don't know the names of, but they were in the oilfield business, they would go to Halliburton, or Sunbrerg, or to chemical companies such as CESI that supply them, as an example.
And this is an upstart business, you all did just relocate here?
No, we started from scratch, absolutely.
Mr. Robertson, go ahead. How many, how many employees do you have employed out there at this time?
We have fourteen at this time, yes, sir.
Okay. Of those fourteen, do we have, what percentage of our local residents that just did not move to town, that someone that worked in local?
Let's think through, Forest Street, Donny, I believe about half, but I'm, I'd have to think through to be sure.
Do you plan on expanding, or are you pretty much at maximum?
We hope to add more employees once we've got the production stream going, and we're at, we have sales in full. Of course, we're not operating in full capacity yet. We would really like to add some more people, but can't afford it yet.
What is your projection, how many employees can you expect, or do you, what do you think you might get to at some point?
I would hope to see us at about twenty. We really need more operators and more maintenance staff than what we have now.
Mr. Robertson, we appreciate you coming. A lot of times, we hear complaints around a community that this city's not doing anything to try to draw jobs here. I met with you and your people, what, three times within the last two weeks working out detail?
Yes, sir, you've been very helpful, we really do appreciate it.
I just want to set the record straight, that this city has worked to do everything we can to get jobs. We're talking about fourteen jobs here, folks, that pay around the average $25 an hour. So, the city is doing something to try to get jobs. And do we have a motion to table?
I'll make that motion.
Motion to table for Mr. Sayers, we have a second. Second from Alton, all those in favor of table, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Let the record show that passed unanimously. Now, Walt, could you stay right there, and I'm going to skip down to this concern issue. I'm going to skip down to item fourteen, so that you can leave, or Mr. Clark, or whoever's here. And that is the, I placed this on the item, is council to discuss a possible initiative of economic development rate on utilities. With that said, I'll tell you that, who's that got that up? Get the, get the, get the police chief to come and find out who's calling that, he's relevant.
He's Greg's, it's yours, chief. You have to understand, the chief is on call.
You're going to find yourself a war. Anyway, bottom line is, is they're fighting electric costs out there, and let me speak to the council about this. As you all know, Tommy Bokey and I represent Jasper on the Sandra Municipal Power Agency. In my dealings with this group, and they're trying to come here and provide jobs, one of the biggest, well, one of the things that they're fighting is utility cost. Now, we can't do anything about gas, which they use a lot of, but we can do something about electricity and water, thankfully, I think water, we all use very little out there, wash the place down. But what I came up with an idea was a economic development rate. And what this would entail is, I envision it, would be the city council entering into agreement with the Sandra Municipal Power Agency, and saying, look, if we've got somebody that's going to come here and provide X number of jobs, then if the Sandra Municipal Power Agency would sell to the city that kilowattage, or that power requirement at a reduced or at-cost price, then the city would do the same, for a limited period of time, to give people like yourself initiative to come to Jasper and open a factory, or a manufacturing facility here, or petroleum products, whatever. And so, but I've already got that on the agenda for the next meeting of the Sandra Municipal Power Agency. But I need some direction from this council tonight, and this is, when we talk about doing the important things for Jasper, this is something, this is probably one of the most important meetings we've had in a while. And that, because it can, it can decide our future. And what I'm wanting for the council to, basically to, and from the city's management to say, to tell me what you think about this, and take action on it, or take whatever, you're the council, I'm just the mayor. But should this be for like a one-year period, or should it be a two-year period, or should it be based on how many jobs, what kind of criteria? What I want is some kind of resolution from the city council to carry forward to the Sandra Municipal Power Agency. Should we, we could do this just in support, or in general faith, and say, hey, we want to work out an economic development agreement to be brought back and be supported, or we could have something specific, what is the thoughts of this council?
I think your idea is good. Coming up with a lot of parameters tonight would be difficult. Like you said, the number of years, how many would you go out? I really don't know. I mean, you could base it on number of employees or jobs provided.
When SRMPA had them before, it was two years, it was 24 months ago, Holiday Express went home and had it two years, and then it dropped off, and we moved them to the larger line, our...
What are our standards already set up?
Matthew's best.
Twenty-four months, okay. Now, do you think, and I'm asking you this time, would it be good for this council tonight, just to make a motion, say in spirit, we move forward to the city to negotiate with the Sandra Municipal Power Agency and its member cities for, and especially economic development rate, not only be good here in Jasper, but be also good in Liberty and Livingston as well?
This is a corporate rate only?
Would it be for commercial?
Commercial plus.
And I, let me say this, what I'd like to do, I'd like to see this not only for new businesses coming here, but for a business that is here, and they say, hey, look, we're going to add this other part, we're going to add on here and put another 20 people on.
Absolutely.
You know, I don't want it to be just limited to people coming here, I want it to be for people that are already here, and if they say, look, you know, we're thinking about adding another facility here, we're going to add a wing to our deal here, we're going to put another 20 people on, we say, okay.
Something tied to job creation. Yeah.
Well, would we want to do that at the beginning of construction, or at the day they begin producing?
I think those are some factors that, obviously, in my opinion, are going to have to be worked out, not only between this city, but also the other member cities of the electric buying group, the Sandra Municipal Power Agency, and basically come up with a solution that meets the requirements of all, because if the SRMPA doesn't go for it, we ain't going to be able to.
I'll make a motion, you start that negotiation process.
I'll say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you so much. And I will take that to the next meeting, Mr. Robertson. If you fail, we want it to be said that it was not about the city of Jasper, we want city to succeed.
We appreciate it very much.
We have no doubt about it, we want you here.
Thank you, we're glad to be here. It's been a real pleasure for me to tell other people about what a great community Jasper is, and how well we've been received here, how many businesses have supported us with products and services, and it's our pleasure to be part of Jasper.
Thank you, sir. Okay, consider, consider the request from Jedco, oh, wait a minute, would we take action on that, and we pass it down, so for the record? We'll jump back to number seven, consider request from Jedco, consider reappointment of Jedco board members, Bill Nelson, Tom Hertz, Alan Chestnut, Tracy Morgan, Larry Brown, Tommy Adams, Kenneth Brooks, Stephen Ernst, and Richard Clower.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Sayers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Let the record show that it was unanimous. We have up next, consider request from Jedco board to consider appointment Randy Sayers to the Jedco board to replace Gloria Bonzingo, who has reached her term limits.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second. Make a motion to table, it's been made by Hazel Johnson, and that was seconded by who? Alton, seconded that? All those in favor of table, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Let the record show that it was unanimous. Consider a table item, consider request from management regarding the Sandra Municipal Power Agencies refund. Tommy, would you come forth and explain, everybody already knows about this, but I guess they may have some questions, and at least you're probably going to be asked about Number nine in your book, if you'll turn, you'll see the cities in the city will hand a refund to the SRMPA of the amount of $757,655.75. Management requests the use of monies for a 3% raise for city employees. The last raise was made in 2011, meaning balances in previous years will be used to reduce rates of the city. Have a motion or discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, Mr. Sayers.
If we apply the 757, let's see, the total of the 701, how much would that reduce? Instead of reducing electric rates, we talked about a refund applied to bills?
It's the same thing, the refund, what I do is, I take it and allocate the $700,000 over a 12-month period, and that amount is deducted from the power cost on a monthly basis, and divided by the kilowatts to get the power cost each month.
Do you have any idea what that reduces?
It's around 13, 10 to 12 to 13 dollars a month per customer.
Based on the 701?
Right, but it does base on, you know, that's on an average, but it's going to fluctuate.
It'd be how much?
About anywhere from 10 to 13 dollars, but that's based on usage, you know?
Per month.
Per month.
Yeah.
Is there any way we could document that on the bill, what people are actually seeing every month, this is a rebate you're getting, or is that just not really feasible? The book, the bill, from what I understand, is so full now, but I do know if you put a dollar on there, they will call.
Well, I'm, I'm, let me get that off end of that. We put a dollar on the water bill for the animal shelter, and I caught more flack about 50 than anything I've ever caught as mayor. And then, we give people, what was, about $15 off their electric bill, I didn't hear nothing of it, because nobody knew it. And what I'm going to say is, is that I think we do this, we need to let the people know.
But mayor, it's not going to be, it won't be, they won't, every bill won't come after the $10, because it's based...
But it will come based on the deduction of that bill, whether it's $3 or it's $20.
You can't show it as a rate like that, that it won't, I mean, that's just going to be an average of just the total, I mean, if somebody, you know, grand...
Now, I'm going to throw something else out here, and it's going to totally surprise this council, because contrary to what people believe, this council, very seldom, they ever talks to each other until we get up here. What if we did that over a five-month period in the summer, instead of all year long?
Can you do that?
I mean, what if we could come to the people of Jasper and say, look, our work through the SRMPA and these other agencies is going to result in a reduction in electricity for the people of Jasper, and we're going to give it to you in the summer months when you need it most.
Five instead of twelve, and then twenty instead of any, or whatever.
And then people can say, pick up their bill, say, hey, guess what? Down there in the city, oh, they're trying to help me.
Do you really think that would work?
I still want you, but I have faith.
I mean, we can, and we may not be able to completely put every information on the bill, but there are other ways that we can let them know that...
Well, I want the council to consider this, is there any way that we could take this money and put it on this paydown of electricity in the hot summer months, when people are fighting a hot electric bill, and sitting up there, can't run a air conditioner?
I would say why I can't have, or you want it, I mean, you, we'd take it right now divided by twelve, and it's like fixed something out of my mind, but we could do it divided by five.
Or divided by three, nobody can get electric bill. We could refer to city council, everyone would say, hey, next three months, you all owe me back for electricity.
What would be the most feasible, feasible thing to do, what would you recommend? I would recommend doing it per month, and letting everybody get the benefit.
Well, everybody will get the benefit.
And if we did it over four or five months, in the hot summer months, everybody'd get the benefit.
I like the three months.
Or two. Whatever. We could do one month.
Done without any accounting.
Alton, what'd you say?
I said, or two, even better.
I said, oh, two, even though.
It's just a matter of what, the amount that I deduct when I do the calculate, when I calculate. Now, I, I'm, we have some, when I say a million to a million-two power cost bills in the hot summer, you know, if I'm paying that and you know that well, that everybody will have the power bill for one time.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, that would be the best beneficial for them. They would see more of it. I mean, you know, some of them in December, it's not being enough, they don't notice $13.
Correct.
But they might notice 25 in the middle of July, August.
I ain't sitting up hot in the house when you get that bill, you'll notice it.
Well, that's kind of like, you know, the elderly is on a fixed income. I know a lot that don't run their air conditioner much during the day, they only do it at night when they sleep. And they sit under the fan during the day. And if it'll help them June, July, and August, that'd be most beneficial. Or May, June, July, August, and September, the five-month period, then I, I think that's the way to go.
But the only thing about with this one, we're not even, we're, just now, we're on, we've got three months left of last year's. So, if we, if y'all decide this and you go to next year's, this really wouldn't go into effect, they really wouldn't see it till June, July, or May, June, to next year because we're still now on last year's refund.
When does this refund actually come to us?
That refund coming in, in February, March.
Oh, it's in the bank.
But that doesn't mean that I can't. I mean, I can swap the months, you know, I can use the, what you're saying, if you want the, the big dollar amount this year for this refund and still carry on the months that we are not using.
Then what do we do next year?
Well, next year, you're going to get one again. Hopefully, you'll get one, one again.
Maybe, maybe not.
We have this going for the last 10 years.
Well, you know, the only thing I can see, council, is if there's some big storm that tears down all the SRMPA's facilities or something other, and then, you know, we could always come back and look, change it. I mean, we, we, that's what we got. Then we, you know, yeah, we could work with that next year. Let's do it this year.
Well, because you won't, we won't be, you won't vote on next year's money until we get it anyway.
That's right. We could say, next year, hey, folks, we had a big hurricane, you saw that tore in all these poles? And, and so you're not going to get your big deduction that you get next year, and then that's when they'll come by and solve it. But, but I think, council, I think this is not a deal to help people in the summertime.
I agree.
Five months?
No.
Three months?
Three.
You're going to have your hottest deals, the next three will be your highest. I mean, that's just me, I like the next three, what do y'all like? I do. I do.
Alton, what do you think?
I think three.
Three months?
So, July, August, and September is coming here right now?
Yeah.
And also, Mr. Dicks? Wait, wait, we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Alton make the motion, I'll second.
Randy's already made it.
Who? Randy? Okay, made the motion by Mr. Sayers, second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Scott. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dicks, next year, if we get the money in February? Can you make a note that we discuss this at the March or the April meeting so we can get it set up for that summer?
Yes.
If, if we get it?
A little housekeeping here, pardon your procedure. Let's go back. Did, Mr. Muggs, Mr. Sayers, your motion was made, is that also to give the, to the refund of these $757,655.75 and then to give the, the increase to the 3% to the city employees?
Yes.
Okay. City secretary, show that motion to be clarified. Mr. Scott, do you accept that motion? Do you still second that motion?
Yes.
And, and all of those in favor still say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. And let me say this, as a mayor, I don't remember a city council ever in the history of Jasper taking such a large step to the people of this town. I like being mayor when we do something like this. Consider table action, consider policy governing budget overuse. Thought we pretty much addressed this. I'm running on, is there still a question?
We didn't really decide it.
I think what we talked about was that we were going to get into this next, or in August, when we do our budget.
I believe you're right, Mr. Mayor.
You know, we would address it at that time.
I thought it was.
In general, we don't want folks going over budget. But I don't think it needs them.
Do we have a motion to?
Motion to table to first.
Well, a motion to omit, because I think it's already been addressed.
There we go.
What'd you say?
I'm just saying. He said we already have.
Okay. So, there's nothing moot, I, no discussion. Number 11, consider setting the date of the city's annual budget workshop. Step recommends Thursday, August 2nd at 6:00 PM, Thursday, August 9th at 6:00 PM. Motion and our discussion?
I mind a minute, square a dollar.
I make a motion on Thursday, August 9th, 6:00 PM.
Thursday, August 9th, 6:00 PM is what the motion is from Councilman Johnson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. McMillan, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Let the record show that the major passed unanimously. Number 12, council to discuss the deadline for city council agenda.
Mayor, this is something that I've requested. I would like to have a little more time than a weekend to get these agenda items. I don't know if this is something that we've done intentionally in the past over the years. To me, that doesn't, it seems, to me, it seems to be kind of a half-out way of doing it. We get these things, these agenda items on Friday afternoon. A lot of times we don't, you can't talk to department heads, you can't get a hold of anybody, you know, over the weekend. If we had a week's time, you know, to kind of digest some of these things that were on the agenda, if, if need be that we talked to, you know, police chief or the head of the water sewer or, you know, something that comes up, then we would have time to do that and get the pros and cons of various issues that we face. And that's just a, a personal, well, an issue, I guess.
It would need a little time to just.
I'd like to have a little more time. There may be some things that we need to talk about, you know, one-on-one, things that, that are put on here. And you cannot do that when you get this thing on Friday afternoon for a Monday evening meeting.
You making that a motion? Well, not really, because any discussion more?
Well, to open it up for discussion. What I would like to do is to have this at least a week in advance. For us to get our agenda, have a cutoff.
The Friday before we get in now.
Yeah, have a cutoff on agenda items. Anything that comes in after that time, just put it on next month.
Okay, enter into discussion, city secretary Kerry Pumphrey and city manager Tommy Boykin, because they're going to be affected and influenced by this. What is the thoughts of the manager?
If you get it, if you move it back a week, you're not going to get all of your monthly records, you know, by a bank statement, you know, by anything you're cutting.
Well, that was going to lead me to the next request, which was to move our monthly meeting back to the third Monday of the month. We have the same situation in the business, one of the businesses that I run. You cannot get your bank statements, everything comes in around the 10th or the 12th, you know, which is precedes the second Monday of the month most, most of the time. It's such a hurried, rushed thing to get current financial information. In fact, by putting the monthly meeting on all the week, you would actually be able to get more complete financial information, more recent complete financial information because that time, bank statements come in for the previous month. I know in our business, you know, we just today at 1:00 got our June bank statements. Okay? So, I'm sure the, the city has a similar situation.
I've got a sec.
Yeah. So, if we just put the monthly meeting back one week and we had an agenda cutoff, you know, first of all, we would have timely information, we'd have a chance to digest some of the things that we're going to have to blow down. And I'll be quite honest, some of the things I don't know. You know, I'd like to have a little time to investigate, see, you know, what, what is actually the pros and cons of this particular thing here, instead of just going through the motions, you know, yell as button.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes, ma'am.
What, what time did you have in mind for the city council meetings? Do you have to think about the, the people that work?
We're not on that item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's the next item.
We're just talking about.
What, the city's charter says that the city council merely, as I recall, has, has to set a time and place for a, a meeting date and a time, right? That could be any day of the week.
Could be the third Monday, second Monday, doesn't it?
I think when I read it before, I think it's stipulated, just because it's, we'll meet one time a month at a certain time and place.
Yeah, the charter about the council. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel, but I'm just asking if we could consider making a, I mean, really, is it, is it with this, you know, which, first of all, we changing the regular monthly meeting from the second Monday to the third Monday, would that create any hardships in any departments or in, in any city venues that y'all are aware of? Would that inconvenience anybody? Anybody on the council?
The charter, the charter doesn't say anything about which month, which day, it just says one day.
I believe that's correct.
It says that we need to, need to have a regular monthly meeting.
It's a traveling place to be scheduled, determined by council.
And you like the third Monday?
Well.
I don't have a problem with it.
The third Monday accommodates a cutoff time better than having.
No, I agree. I, I have no problem.
Does any member of the council have a problem with the third?
No. But still get your.
And here's another.
End at home.
Yeah, now, here, here's another deal, though. If you did this too, this would allow people that wanted it, let's just say, we assume we keep it the same time, a lot of people will go to school board, go to school board and the city council. So, you get, sometimes people need, they got something at city hall and they got something at school board, well, this would allow them to go to either place.
Say that again?
We would have moved it from a night other than school board night, which would be beneficial to a lot of folks that have issues that they want to monitor at both places.
We'll present the books for the second Monday and then everybody have a week just if that did.
Correct.
Well, yeah, just have, have the agenda put together and, and finalize, you know, the Monday before, on the second Monday. Yeah, like you do now. Well, actually, we get it like on Friday, but you can have Monday, you know, you finalize the agenda so that we can pick it up on Monday evening or Tuesday for the fall.
For the folks that are out there in the audience, the council gives their, the, the, gives their agenda is usually on Friday about noon now. And what the councilman is doing here is he's saying that is, that he would like to have it ahead of that so that he can find that more information and ask questions. For instance, it might be something in his district and he might want to go ask people in his district what they think about that before he votes on it.
Well, a perfect example of which would be the evasement issue. You know, had we had that a week in advance, we might could have made the decision tonight.
Yeah.
You know, they could have come prepared.
Is there a motion?
I, I would make the motion that we move our regular monthly meeting to the third Monday of the month and that city secretary or whoever is charged with the responsibility of, of putting the agenda together, cut that agenda off on the preceding Monday.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second by Mrs. Johnson. A motion made by Mr. McMillan, second by Mrs. Johnson. Any more discussion? We'll go ahead and call a vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Let the record show that it passed unanimously. Up next is item 13, and that is the council to discuss the time of the city council meetings, which was also requested by, I had two members of the council to discuss that, Mr. McMillan and I think Mrs. Johnson, can you bring it up? Okay, it's you, okay. Okay, do we have a motion or any discussion?
Well, I, I don't think that we're actually, you know, what I wanted to suggest was that we put this out here for a, perhaps a 60-day period of time to get comments from citizens, you know, the public, what they think about it. I would like to see us move our monthly meeting to 2:00 noon.
Is that so the city staff could be here and not be held over like the art seven lucky night?
Well, yeah, and because, you know.
So, you're not proposing a time? You're making a motion that we explore that?
I mean, yeah.
And it's the city council to discuss it with their constituents and bring that up at the next meeting?
Well, yeah, or, or at some point down the road.
Actually, I, I mean, I put it out, I wouldn't bring it back up to the September meeting. That way it gives us about two months, you can advertise it on your radio station, that gives us time to hear comments.
I just want to get some feedback on it. I don't know why we couldn't do it at 2:00. I mean, I don't, if that's, or, or 3:00.
A lot of people working in, a lot of people working in woodwork meeting.
What about the business people?
Would you be able to be here, Clinton? Would you be able to be here?
I'd be able, I'd be here anytime, but most people can't.
Okay, so you're not saying anything now? You want to make that motion?
Well, no, I'm not willing to make the motion, but I, I don't know what, I just want to get.
You could make a motion to the council, explore this and decide if it's a good thing.
Okay, all right, well, I'll make that motion, in that we explore it, that we give it till September 1st to.
September meeting.
Our October meeting, when we start our fiscal year. Would you say September?
Well, we would discuss it again at the September meeting. And that's when you'd make a decision whether you want to change it or not.
Yeah. So, there would be no change?
How about, how about the motion to table?
Make the motion table.
Scott.
We got to get out of here sometime tonight.
I make the motion to table.
Motion table by Mrs. Hazel Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second, second by who? Randy Sayers? All those in favor of table say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Let the record show that it passed unanimously. Our pursuit to Texas government, 551.07, for the city council convened closed executive session to discuss and deem appropriate, take action on personnel matters regarding city manager Tommy Boykin. Let the record show that we're going out at 7:08 PM Central Daylight Time. Okay, show the time here to be 7:44 Central Daylight Time and we are back in exec, out of the executive session for the open part of the meeting, which for those of you out there who have not taken any action ever inside of the executive session, so we have to come back out here. With that said and done, do we have any action as a result of the meeting with Mr. Boykin?
No.
No action. Okay. Mr. Sayers, I understand you want to make a public, a public announcement.
Item number eight, I have withdrawn my name with consideration for JECO. Can we reconsider that and vote on that tonight?
I don't think that'd be proper tonight. I think that was already tabled to a, a next meeting, but basically you're saying that you moved your name from that to that tonight.